I'm calling February fourteenth, work session to order. Our first item on the agenda is the 2022 comprehensive rezoning with Kathy Marr, Director of Planning and Code Administration. Hi Kathy.
Hello.
Hello.
Back to report that we had no input at the hearing and nor in the ten days following. And so now it's a case of your chance to review what's in here, decide if you're ready to move forward for introduction at the end of this month. But again, it's to rezone fourteen properties to I N S T, institutional zone, parks and schools and so forth. And so I haven't had any questions yet, I don't know if you have any questions now.
I have a question.
Okay.
One, one question.
How long is a question?
Well, I know when some institutions get rezoned to this, that it decreases their land or their property valuation in terms of, you know, if they hold a note or something. And most of these I really don't care about because they're, they're public or quasi-public. But I was curious, Woodland Way Park, that's just the park, right? That's not?
Right, not the school.
Okay.
All right, we're good?
All right, so are we ready to introduce resolution on the twenty eighth?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the annual land management code update package and Stephen Brockler, Development Review Planner, Zoning Administrator.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just to go over a couple of quick things, y'all had your public hearing on thirty first. The only public comment that you received at that time was from Elise Cohen, who owns the property in the C R zoning district, wanting to do sports booking on her property and spoke in support of the text amendment that would allow it in C R and other zoning districts. Then the record was left open for ten days. During that time period, we received public comment from only one person, that was Hank Brown with Blackthorne. He was recommending language that requires thresholds for various types of residential uses and the new N M U developments apply when the property is five acres or greater, as not to complicate the development of smaller properties. Staff endorses this. We also, since we received it, we discussed it with the planning commission at their meeting last week, and they also agree that it is logical, makes sense, and they also support it as well. So it's just, it would be a one-line line out of the text that you see in Mr. Brown's letter. It's actually a pretty simple strikeout. At this point, our next steps is you all cover the package, select what you want to move forward with, select what you want to take out, what you want to move forward with, with changes, and then if you're in agreement, then we'll go to introduction of ordinance at the end of the month, approval the following month, and be in effect thirty days thereafter. Be around the end of April.
Yep.
I'm a no. For the motor home and RV line.
You want to discuss that?
No, I think we've talked about it numerous times now. I mean, I just think folks should be able to store that stuff on their property at their discretion.
So I'm hearing move forward with the entire package as is with Mr. Brown's amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Why is, well, I'm going to help Chris to spank him.
Okay.
Why is the motor home portions more than one shade, had sleighing and all that on their property on such a, I mean, besides one guy who said, I look at, I see this my own, getting the driveway next to me? I mean, other than that, what is the reasoning?
The reasoning is, is that we received a phone call or an email, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we received some sort of communication from someone looking to widen an existing one-car driveway in a small lot subdivision so they could park a motor home or trailer that would basically take the entire property from the front face of the house out to the sidewalk and right up against the property line. And that caused us to look at the ordinance and realize we really don't have anything within the zoning code that deals with this. And where we looked into it, other jurisdictions do to one degree or another, even to the point where the motor home industry and their website, when they advise, you know, hey, I'm thinking about buying a motor home, and they have information on their website. One of the things that they do tell people is consult your local zoning authority because rules apply in different places. So apparently it's fairly common, but what happened was in that particular case, we looked at if that person followed through on it, and I don't believe they did, and I don't even remember the address anymore, but it was up in the Fairchild Heights area somewhere. If that person did what they proposed to do as they described it, it would have been quite disruptive and detrimental to the neighbor. Let me show you the hypothetical here. This is a house up in that neighborhood. I don't know if this was or wasn't, I just picked a random house under certain similar circumstances. It was a single-car wide driveway. You can tell to the left of the driveway where the grass kind of changes color, where there was different fertilizers or lawn cutting or whatever. But in that particular situation, the person was talking about widening out their driveway out to the property line and then parking a motor home that runs from the front face of the house out to the sidewalk. And then the idea is, is that, and this was discussed heavily with the planning commission, they didn't just rubber stamp it, they looked at it in detail. And the thought was, is where do you find the balance in a zoning ordinance? Because the zoning ordinance always does two things. It balances individual property rights versus the protection of neighbors from their neighbors using their property lights, rights to the detriment of theirs. And what, what we did is we did a little exercise where we showed some of the examples which we had showed you all prior, which were out in the county as examples, and said, okay, if you were in this situation, if you, if I was a real estate agent and I was taking you around to show you houses, and we pulled up in front of the house next door to, and we pointed where the camper was, who amongst you in the planning commission would say, I'm not even going in that house? And just that, all the hands went up. So it, something like this does, if done inconsiderate of your neighbors, can have a significant impact on your quality of life and frankly, the potential for reselling your property. I can tell you that some of the examples that, from a personal perspective, and I like to think I'm a fairly reasonable individual, that the examples that were in, that we showed you all before, if I was shopping for a house and I saw those on the property next door, I'd keep moving. I wouldn't even consider purchasing that house. So there's where you get your balance. And with these particular proposals, we thought they seemed to strike the right, I mean, you can't, it's not that you can't do it, it's just that you're limited to one, it's limited to twenty-five feet or long, keep it in the backyard. You don't even have to pave a driveway back to it, because you're only probably pulling it out once or twice a year anyway. But, and it would need to be on a, on at least a gravel surface, that's consistent with actually other city codes, because you don't want a vehicle just sitting on the grass and dirt. So we thought we struck the right balance there, but if you think this is a little bit much, I mean, you know, you do have the ability to tailor it if you want.
Nope, I'm good.
I mean, a lot of houses, you can't get to the backyard.
You can't.
I mean, for me, listen to me, I'll just take my example. I have the alley in my back, back of my house, right? Off of that alley, I have an immediate six-foot drop, right? So there's no reasonable way that I could even get, first of all, you got to get a camper down the alley, if anybody's driven with a camper, pulled one or whatever, then you got to be able to turn it in this twelve-foot alley, most of which have either back fences or hedgerows, right up to the edge of the alley. So now you got to be able to turn it into your rear property or back it into your rear property, a lot of times in change of elevation. And there's just, there's no reasonable way unless you have a way to like skirt somehow, you know, between you and your neighbor, most of which in the city are four, five-foot, six-foot property lines. So you don't have a way to really get it around your house and back in, in so many of these cases. And I don't know if you can put a shed in front of your house?
Cannot.
So you're eliminated now from being able to be able to, where mine sits right now, I couldn't even enclose it. And even if I put it in the side yard, which would be between my neighbor and me, right? Reasonable, luckily, I have about twenty-five feet of my property between myself and my neighbor, right? Now I can't even put it in that twenty-five feet of space, which, by the way, since the house has been there since nineteen oh six, has been a driveway, literally to the shed that sits directly behind the house. So I can't even put it in that location now. I could somehow get it on an angle between ten foot of space between the shed and the house, out of the driveway, a driveway that holds twelve vehicles, and get it in the backyard to a new parking spot, not in the driveway that holds twelve vehicles, but another driveway. I would just, I understand the, the practicality of saying I don't want a forty-foot motor home sitting right up to the sidewalk, but my, again, my camper and probably a lot of the other ones in this city probably set fifteen, twenty feet back from the road. So to me, like, I don't care that it's in the front yard as much as I care that it isn't right up to the sidewalk. It's no different than the reason we don't allow fences in that manner to block that line of sight. But right down the street from me is a twelve-foot tall hedge that goes right up to the sidewalk between two driveways, and that hedge is okay, just not something else that blocks it. It just, the, 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 the argument is, is nonsensical when it is applied in such a generic fashion.
Down the street.
To every lot in the city.
Down the street, isn't it county though?
No, 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 down the street towards Big Dipper. Before you get to, to Hong Kong, there, there's two houses, there's a driveway there, two driveways, and there is a hedgerow that gotta be like twelve feet high.
It's easily.
Right? That's okay. So.
When, when, when you mentioned how you have a camper, and I wasn't aware of that, so of course I had to go check Street View to see what your property looked like, and I found your camper on Street View. And your property is actually very atypical of the city.
It is.
Large lot, you got, like you said, you have like ten parking spaces.
I have a half acre with like, you know, ten parking spaces on a house that was built a hundred years ago. And all I'm saying is, is I get the notion that you don't want it to be right on the line and right up to the sidewalk, but if, if the parameters are you don't want it right up to the line, the property line, and you don't want it right up to the sidewalk, then, then, then we should say that in a better way. So it's.
Can there be a request for exception to this?
We don't have anything baked into it.
Yeah, but I mean, can we bake it into that?
It's kind of a peculiar question, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I'd have to research it and find out.
I, I mean, because everything is not, you know.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
I mean, it's not, it just isn't. Christians is different than mine and my neighbor's and one of these.
And one of the things that you've mentioned a few times is, you know, how it takes away from the appeal for when someone is going to look to purchase a house, right? But if that same camper is in the backyard and you've made it into the front of the ha, into the house you're going to look at, and then you go out on your, your new possible deck and you see that camper, it's going to be the same thing. It's gonna have that same.
I would respectfully disagree. I think it would be less of a concern.
Right. I mean, I personally don't think that it takes away from, I can understand how it would be annoying to look out at a giant camper, but I, for me, it wouldn't take away like whether I wanted to live in the neighborhood or not.
Yeah, I mean, my neighbors had two boats and six cars for the last ten years.
And I think, again, you know, if you're, you're looking out, you're back, you know, you're at your kitchen and you're looking outside and, you know, you see this giant camper, it's gonna be the same thing.
I think for me, it would, it would be more palatable if I could reasonably get to the backyard.
Right.
But we're making a gross assumption that so many houses.
Right.
And the case is just, for that type of, of apparatus to get in the alley is just, it's not.
Yeah, it's difficult, yeah.
Practical in a lot of situations.
Unfortunately, we couldn't write something that would handle all circumstances. You're right, properties vary, properties, but if we were going to write something, this is where the line kind of fell. And what it may mean is, and this is, would be something for you all to decide whether this is appropriate in your discussion on this, is whether or not some properties that just aren't appropriate for storing something like that on them because of they're too small or too close to the neighboring house or whatever. I mean, that's, that's a policy question for you all. So, but.
Well, why don't we take that part out of the management code until we can figure it out? I don't mean hold it up completely, but just.
That section.
Okay, so what you're saying is force to take it back, take another look at it, and then come back with it with a layer.
I just think come up with a setback. Like, to me, the egregious part is you don't want it sitting right next to your property line. I don't want a mo next to one, every day, right? I think that, that's, you know, what happens, you, you're kicking grass, you don't want that, and you don't want it to sit right up at the curb causing a line of sight issue. To me, those two things seem to be the things that, that people don't want.
If adequate setback and things like that, that'd be a different story.
Since you're going in that direction, what would you, what would your thoughts be about taking existing parking? Because not all properties provide the two or more parking spaces would be currently compliant with the ordinance. So I wanted to do that on the example.
Yeah, I don't think it should do that either.
Could somebody park a camper there and leave it all the time and park in the street all the time?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's right on the property line, that's right at the curb, and it's taking parking that you expect for the home. Yeah, I think that those are the things you don't want to happen. But there are tons of lots in this city that aren't that scenario.
Right.
You're right.
Especially along most of our thoroughfares like, you know, Potomac Street and Virginia Avenue and, you know, other, I don't know, Maryland Avenue, I can think of a lot of them that had, are wider situated with, you know, lots that can accommodate.
Yeah, I, I would characterize it that most would be more like this, especially closer you get into downtown. But there are, as large as a city as we have, there are going to be a lot of properties that are similar in the ballpark of Councilman, Member Al Shire's.
Yeah, we can just remove it and then kind of.
Yeah, we can just remove that part and then adopt the other land management code, land management code amendments, and then come back to that when we have it figured out.
Sure, that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds satisfying.
We have hub city garage, parking deck bids, Rodney Tish.
I know. It's Valentine, I was trying to be nice.
Oh, really?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Well, what is it? What is going on?
Did you draw that?
Did I draw that? No, that's from our architect.
So I just want to have kind of a general discussion about this as we begin to prepare our recommendations for you. We opened the bids today, this morning, so we haven't had time really to put anything together for you to hand out to you, but we got five bids, which is good. Callis Contractors, Hickertown, Washington County firm was the low bidder, and that's also good news. Their low bid for basically what you see here was eleven million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a five-story, one, two, three, four, the fifth floor's structure. Our budget's about ten million. When we were here in September, we talked about this and the whole notion of whether or not we should eliminate a floor, you remember that discussion? So we had that in there as an alter in a bid, and it turns out that the fifth floor, the value of that's one point six million dollars. So if you eliminate a floor, you're down in around that ten million dollar number. We have to add in some contingencies, you know, construction projects, we want to add in a few hundred thousand dollars for that. And we're meeting with Callis on Thursday to brainstorm ways to try to get the price down, and I'm sure that would be, you know, tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars. Just the deck components themselves, just the concrete deck is seven million dollars. Just, you know, buying it from a fabricator. So we're kind of at a crossroads then on the decision on this is that we can go the savings route and that it would be, the big savings would be to eliminate a floor. Another thing you could do, it's bid to have a brick facing on it like this, which is similar to what both our other decks have, at least on the, on the street side. You could remove the brick, the clay brick facing, put concrete, it would, a concrete structure, it is a concrete structure, but a concrete aesthetic to it. They use these things called form liners that make an impression of a brick, and then you stain it. You could save about three hundred thousand dollars doing something like that. We're already getting rid of this piece of art, these fins, we're getting rid of those, some of those kind of aesthetic things that the architect had in there, we're going to simplify greatly. But I guess the question comes down to, do we want this brick-looking deck? Or are we okay compromising on that a little bit? So you can eliminate a floor, we can eliminate some of the aesthetics, or we could just try to find other funds, and that would be a Michelle question, and I think that would mean we'd have to take the money from other.
She's shaking her head yes.
Other programs. I can't quite feel that over my shoulder.
We already had this conversation, so.
It would have to come from other programs or.
What's the number difference?
One point six.
No, 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 number of spaces difference.
So the five floors, three ninety-seven.
Okay.
And the fourth, four level one is three fifteen. So when I did the parking study, just to refresh our memories on that, if you assume that the stadium is eighty percent full, we need fifteen hundred parking spaces, and we have that easily in the downtown, especially with this being built. So this is like twenty to twenty-five percent of the necessary spaces for the stadium, and the rest of it will park in the other two decks and on surface lots and on streets, right? So that's at eighty percent full. Atlantic League games are typically like fifty to seventy percent full. So I feel comfortable with the number of spaces on a four-level deck meeting the demands of the stadium, but, yeah.
What are the two decks in town now?
The U D deck is four hundred and forty spaces.
How many floors? I'm sorry.
Five. And the A and E deck is a hundred and eighty-five spaces on four floors. This, this, this price, this cost for the full deck is over twenty-nine thousand dollars per parking space. You eliminate the floor, you, you save overall costs, but the price goes up per space, it goes up to about thirty-two thousand dollars per space to build. So.
I'm leaning more toward get rid of the brick facing and we'll figure out, you know, I'll come up with that extra money for the fifth floor.
Keep the fifth floor.
I mean, if, if we're gonna build it, you can add on to it later, if you're gonna build it.
Yeah.
Why would you not build it to, to the capacity?
Yeah.
That, you know, that you want and, and maybe not need right away than to need it five years from now and not have it? So.
Might have to build another apartment somewhere.
Right, right. So I'd much rather stick to five and cut that and figure out some other stuff. Maybe, you know, maybe we cut Michelle salary or something like that. I'll pay for it.
Would never let that happen, Michelle, ever.
Yeah, he's gone in a month.
Oh, she come.
There you did it. You've done it now. Good joke, Michelle.
Just, just food for thought, okay? For a twenty-five-year bond, one ten million at four point two five percent, we're looking at six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the next twenty-five years. This fund at ten million in bond is going to be upside down in negative cash for ten years. We do not have the flex, we don't have the flexibility to fund and subsidize the parking fund through our general fund like we can with a golf fund.
Every space has to generate five dollars and thirty cents a day.
I know. And every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Five bucks a day, every day.
During the day. And some of those spaces are already accounted for, right? With current contracts that.
It's a hundred and twenty of them.
At a slightly lower price than what we would normally charge in some of our other decks. I know you think one point six million wants the big deal, but we have tried, I've tried every other avenues of funding. So unless we can find a private partner who would like to contribute up to one point six million to help us do this extra four, I'm, I'm telling you, upside down for ten years in negative cash at ten million, okay?
What?
So we don't do thirty-year bonds anymore? We don't do twenty-five?
We, we're gonna, I'm gonna have that discussion tomorrow with our bonding and our bond council.
I think it'd be helpful for me to understand the number that is the compromise. In other words, I hear eleven point six, and I see Rodney shaking his head, that you might be able to cut a half a million? Like, for me, I'd like to, I'd like to understand from you what, what the actual like red line is, you know? Is it ten? Is it ten and a half? Is it eleven?
So several, for several years, we were sticking strictly with the ten million, and that ten million included the acquisition cost. So the reality is, right now, I already have acquisition cost five hundred thousand dollars more than we thought. The price, this eleven point six million, and Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that that base price includes the artwork right there.
These are extras, these fins, this is all extra. This art is included, and the plan there was to have a local artist come up with something.
What's the necessity of the thing on the corner? What's the necessity of the thing on the corner?
This?
No, no, no.
This? It's an elevator or stair tower, an enclosed stair.
Aesthetics.
Yeah, I guess that's a question, are we trying to do that so that we can make like pedestrian accessibility as visible as possible to limit?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, these are all windows.
The things we experience in, 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 in the other.
Yeah, the whole stair tower will be visible from the outside.
But I tell you, this is empty.
It is, yes, I should have been clear. So the cultural trails right here.
There's two stair towers.
Yeah, see that one in the back?
The one on the back is a stair tower elevator. So the elevator's actually back.
Which would actually go toward the plaza.
Exactly, because most daily use, people would go onto those buildings and from downtown to that.
Let's not limit ourselves right down to four floors, let's, let's try to find a way to make five work, talk about a thirty-year bond, a more to your bond council.
And I will, I will. I, I, I guess what I'm saying is we don't have acquisition cover or a portion of it covered without bonding, right? So I have one point two acquisition plus I have the construction of the deck.
Can you say the numbers again? Spaces?
So three hundred and.
Three hundred and ninety-seven.
Versus?
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen?
Yeah, eighty-two spaces.
That's eighty-five, eighty-four spaces.
Yes.
We've even asked for a partner head.
So the four-floor version envisioned, you're parking on the fourth, on the, the.
Top floor.
The top floor, like the A and E, right?
Yeah, open air, yeah. Yeah, there's, this is an open air parking on this.
And again, so the eleven point six, we can come back and start hitting the aesthetics, but the eleven point six, even just removing, moving the art screen that's there and the fins, aren't included in that eleven point six. So we're, we're talking about, you know, do you want something that's not break that you're gonna have to maintain before the thirty years is up? You're looking at ten, in ten years, or, you know?
I kind of like the finish they were doing on the warehouses, the tan.
They would look like a warehouse. You know, I'm gonna be the guy that says it. Okay, I'm gonna be the guy that says it, but unfortunately, up to this point, Washington County government has no dog in this fight whatsoever. Not here, not the stadium, not the plaza, I mean, there's so many things they don't have a hand in, all right? What's wrong with us in the spirit of cooperation, asking for some help to finish funding the parking deck, considering the fact that they're gonna benefit just as much as the city of Hickertown benefits? And, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, increased redevelopment, increased accessible base, and increased, you know, feet on the street. So let's, let's ask. All we can do is ask. And if the answer is no, then the answer is no, but if we don't ask.
Then the answer will always be no.
Yeah.
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 Well, let me also just throw in the factor of time. Well, let me also just throw in the factor of time. So this is gonna take three hundred sixty-five days to build. So from the time you say go, it'll be a year until it's ready to be opened, so.
Well, it can open up in April twenty-four, just like.
Still can.
Just like the stadium can, right. Grand opening on both days.
But we don't have a lot of time.
To get that other funding.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So it's not till we down here.
And, well, and if it opens in May?
Are.
It's in May. I'm not.
Are there, is there any relationship between construction activity at the stadium and construction activity of this as it applies to any type of cost savings that can be achieved through, uh, mobilization of, of excavation and, and that type of?
Right, we reached out to Turner who's building the stadium and they, they picked up the plans and everything, but they didn't actually build it. So I thought maybe there could be some relationship there. This is a bit of a tight site to build. I mean, they're gonna sit on Antietam Street and erect this structure. Antietam Street's gonna be closed for a year. I'll put that out there right now. So, um, it is a bit of a tight, challenging site in that sense, but, um, I didn't know what else to do other than contact Turner.
Does that cost include utilities?
Yes.
Our utilities?
Yes.
So like one.
And stormwater.
Right, like one paying the other.
Stormwater fund will pay for the stormwater management structure that has to be built for this.
The water and sewer, general fund would pay water and sewer for the utility oriented.
That's, that was the plan. It's a pretty small number.
Yeah.
Cause really all we have is an office with a bathroom and then a future bathroom. If you ever wanna have a public bathroom, it would be right here.
What I hear is gonna be here.
We're good on that.
The office? I think it is.
I hope so.
There's always fans.
The expense here, expense here is, is because a part of it is that all four sides are exposed, so all four sides have to be addressed. Where the other decks, the U D deck is the front and back and the U D, and the A and E is just the front. Here you have all four sides. And so if you make one side ugly, it's gonna be visible. Cultural trails on one side and team streets on the other, the plazas on the backside.
Yeah, it'd be nice if, that you could like transition it though.
Well, let's.
Like second to fourth floor being something different, obviously it doesn't need to be as nice, but, but, you know, it could be something.
Well, like, I mean, this is, to me, this is the front, Antietam Street. This is, when you're walking up from the stadium from the cultural trail, this is what you're gonna see right here. I mean, this is on the cultural trail. I mean, it could be concrete and then a mural painted on or something.
I just think like of those angled pieces at the Harold Mail Building, like, that we're still allowed to call that. You know what I mean? It, it has transitioned from brick to, to concrete and it works in a fairly nice architectural manner. Something that, that you could do like.
Well, with the design now.
So we know it's February the fourteenth, okay? So we should have something figured out in concrete by March fourteenth, which is thirty days from now, so that we can move forward, make a decision and, and move forward and get things rolling. So it's done by April, within three, under six to five days.
Right.
By April twenty-fourth.
Right.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Let's go ask.
And this is a, this is a dumb afterthought question, but like in Montgomery County, some other areas, like they put commercial facing the street front in some of the decks, you know what I mean, to make money on that. I'm just looking at those areas there, that's not, that's not in the cards in this, that wasn't.
Yeah, you'd have to raise the elevation up a couple more feet to get the headroom, cause you know decks are.
Right.
So to get a standard office space headroom, you'd have to increase the height.
So the cost on that type isn't, isn't worth it?
I kinda doubt it.
Yeah.
So you also understand, this, this is concerned. The front, but it's actually the exit of the building. You actually enter on the backside. The reason for that is so if there's a lot of people trying to come to the deck for a game, you can queue up on the roads to it and then come in and the exit go right on Antietam Street. Yep.
And everybody likes it here.
Sure. You go left or right.
We could put a marquee on it and advertise.
We talked about that, changing this to advertising.
I mean, it would make money.
How is it gonna work like that?
What do you mean?
I mean, we're kidding ourselves, but it will take time in each of those events. And I don't care about that, but let's not pretend that like, you know, it's gonna flow like, you know, like blood does in the bloodstream. I mean, it's gonna like be stop and go for a half hour in and out.
Okay.
Yeah.
You didn't hear me say it was gonna be easy, easy, simple.
We're the same issue, if there's an event or a lot of people trying to get the Potomac Deck, right?
Oh, yeah.
There's one, one car that can queue up and then you're, and you're entrance, right? So the cars were backed on Potomac, same way at the A and E, they're back on Renaissance Way. At least here they're off the street and get off of Antietam, so they have room to come in. And the exit will actually be moved further downward to where the parking sign is. It won't be in the center of the structure, but a couple of things that are, are not quite like this, but.
I would like to explore the marquee like advertising space, you know? I think that that's kind of, there's something.
It's always possible when you fly from wherever you fly from.
Exactly, but I mean, imagine like putting that right there, like right if you're.
Is that supposed to be a static picture?
It was, yeah, and this is just a stock.
I mean, if you're talking about advertising space and you, you make it a digital billboard.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Like Baltimore Rita or something.
Like a really nice digital thing, which gives us, that's a lot of exposure right there.
All right, we'll work it. Coming back.
And you're back next week, right?
I'd like to, if we can get this figured out, just to keep this moving.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. That's very helpful, thank you.
Board's gonna be a premium to park there for the courthouse.
Next up is, uh, request for proposals, grant management portal and customer relationship management database, Chris Zimmerman, economic development specialist.
Afternoon, everyone. Hello. I'll try to be a little bit quick on this one. So we're looking at trying to bring our department into twenty-first century, wow, twenty-first century, modernize a couple of the things that we're using, um, bring forth our customers' relation management systems CRM. So we have a nice usable database that we can not only store customer building or other kind of business information in, but also pull routine reports, ad hoc reports, or anything else that can help keep everything centralized. Uh, at the same time, we also wanna go ahead and move our grants management from essentially paper PDFs to actually a online database so that people can, uh, go online, pull in their applications. They can keep up to date, um, with where they might be at, any kind of required documents and just have one central location for that. This will not only help make things a bit more efficient, but also cut back on the amount of paper that we as a department are using. If mayor and council are willing to move forward with this, uh, we would work with our finance department to essentially wrap the RFP that is, uh, in front of you, uh, from draft to an actual formal document, um, posted not only on the city's bid site, but also the, uh, email and marketplace as well to solicit offers, uh, for local and other state, uh, agencies or, uh, sorry, software firms or anything like that. And then we would, uh, work with RT, uh, department to not only, uh, rate the different, uh, application that we have to see from feasibility to quality to, uh, price point to anything that fits in between to make sure that we are getting the product that we're applying for or reaching out for essentially, um, in addition to making sure that our needs are met. We'd be looking at using the funds from the current budget year, FY twenty-three, to acquire it and then future, uh, budget years, FY twenty-four, for example, for the, uh, annual cost after that. Are there any kind of questions?
Fabulous idea.
All right. All right, well, moving forward, we'll be working with, um, our finance team and hopefully we'll have the RFP posted, uh, by the end of the month. Thank you.
Legislative updates, city administrator.
All righty, I'll just take a few minutes. Uh, I wanna go through, uh, some important legislation that, uh, has been introduced and in front of, right now it's in committee work. As part of the MML Legislative Committee, uh, probably get to look at between fifty and seventy-five bills a week that affect municipalities. Many of those, uh, affect us in a, you know, in a, in a indirect way, but there are several that were also more specifically geared, uh, many of which just dropped yesterday that I don't have on here, but, but you all should be made aware of. Uh, at the moment, there's about twenty-five hundred bills that have been introduced, uh, in the legislator, in the legislator, uh, legislature on both Senate and House side. Uh, that is a very large amount of bills that have been dropped and, uh, probably more than I've seen in, in quite a while. Uh, I just wanna go through some of the more important ones just briefly. Uh, all of these, uh, we have been asked for letters of support, uh, for the bills, uh, but it's important that you understand, uh, what some of these are that you're being asked to support and, uh, make that decision yourself. The first one, Senate Bill five thirty-three, uh, admissions and amusement tax repeal, that was sponsored by Senators Quarterman and McKay. Uh, basically what that does would eliminate the ability for, uh, the county and municipalities in Washington County to impose an admissions and amusement tax. Uh, we account for, uh, at least ninety-five percent or more of the A and E tax collected in the county municipality wise. It does not speak for Washington County. Uh, right now, that amount that we get is about three hundred thousand dollars a year that goes to the general fund. Uh, we would project that that would go up once the stadium is completed to between four hundred fifty and five hundred thousand dollars a year. And that shows what the A and E tax is applied to. I won't go through those. There are, uh, even though the music, or the stadium would be in the A and E district, uh, there would be some events that would be exempt from this A and E tax. However, uh, baseball tickets would not be because it is not considered by the Maryland State Arts Council to be an art, qualifies as an art. That's why Maryland Theater, uh, the Black Box Theater, uh, anyone, uh, well, I won't say anyone, but most of those events that occur in the A and E district are exempt because they do represent, uh, they do fall into the, uh, definition of an art. Baseball, even though I would consider it an art, uh, is not, uh, is not part of that. So there would be A and E charged there. I have been, uh, I was asked as of this afternoon through an email to get a letter of support from the council. The county today debated this and they are not supporting, uh, they are not, they're opposing this bill. However, they are, uh, wanting to have that flexibility themselves to either apply or not apply an A and E tax regardless of the, because they don't have an A and E district, they don't fall into those requirements, but they would have their own ability to either apply or not apply tax. So that, that's the first one. You have a question?
A letter of support?
Yes.
They're asking if we will give.
They would like to have a letter of support from, from this body to repeal the A and E tax.
Who would?
Uh, Senator Quarterman and McKay.
No.
My answer's no.
Okay.
Why would we do that?
I.
They're, they're just asking the question.
Yeah, it's just a question.
Just a question.
That was a serious question?
That was a serious question.
I think I've talked to Senator Quarterman enough in the last two weeks, so he knows.
Well, and also, I, I would, the hearing, I have on there, the hearing is next Monday at one o'clock. If, if, uh, any of you would be interested in testifying, um, uh, if, if the body is, as a group, the mayor can testify or you can do it written or Zoom, however you wanna do it. But no, that was the request and fully expect, anticipate that that would be your answer. Appreciate that.
Yeah, the answer's no. No, thank you.
Okay.
There's five minutes on there.
Uh, the next two are ones that are very close to me because we've worked on these for about a decade. Uh, Senate Bill five eighteen, tax sale revisions. What this would do, uh, is help us in being able to fight the properties that go to tax sale and basically become zombie properties because nobody bids on them and they just keep in that constant process of coming back to us. Uh, we continue to abate. What this would do would set, would, would be to set a fifteen month timeframe. Uh, instead of waiting the two-year period as anyone else would do, uh, when we have designated a particular property as, as blight, we would be able to take it over. I, in this case, it would allow us to, uh, to take over the ability to pay the purchase price for the property or working out with, with the county between us, being able to wipe out the liens and take the property ourselves and move it, uh, either to the, uh, potential to demo it or to give it or sell it, however we wanna do it, to a nonprofit to be able to utilize for, uh, for their needs. That just basically goes through the whole process, but it is, uh, the same. It was a, a couple of these, uh, bills combined that Senator Edwards put in last year, but are very much in line with what, uh, we have tried to accomplish and what the city of Cumberland has tried to accomplish in getting rid of some of this, uh, some of these properties that just continual, continual to be in the, uh, in the tax sale process. This, the other thing that this would allow us to do, which we can't do now, would be allow, it would allow the municipality to withhold a property from going to tax sale that is tax delinquent, if there were plans for that property to demo it. We've had that instance four or five times in the last ten years, at least when I was downstairs, uh, to where you, you have to send, by state law, you have to send a tax delinquent property, uh, to tax sale, to the county treasurer for tax sale. This would allow us to hold back, uh, if there were plans to demolish, uh, a vacant and blighted building or structure. So that would help immensely to be able to, uh, manage that more. I plan to be down in Annapolis next week to, uh, testify in this hearing to support this bill, if, with, with your all's consent.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And also the same for five sixty-three, property maintenance and nuisance conditions, violation judgments and foreclosure proceedings also put in by Senators Quarterman and McKay, hearing same day, same place. What this allows us to do, um, in the past or currently, uh, we cannot send a property to tax sale if it is current on its tax payment. That happens a lot in, in the situations of estates or where there are trustees that just, it's an escrow and this money just keeps getting paid. However, they're vacant, blighted, abatements pile up. That still stays as an, as, as an outstanding arreage on, on the property, but we can't send it to tax sale. This would allow us to do it. Uh, it would become a first lien on the property, which is what allows us to send it to tax sale. And, um, it would allow us to, uh, to file complaint of foreclosure, uh, at any time during the tax sale of the property when, when, and then we would become, uh, have the opportunity to finalize it through a certificate of sale. Huge benefit to us if we can get this through and also for Allegheny County. And, um, and that would be, um, my second testimony down there, so that's all happening next week. And I appreciate them putting this in, putting those two in, they're huge for us. Uh, House Bill sixty, sixty-seven, criminal law overdosing in public prohibition, delegate Grossman has put that in. Uh, there's a hearing next Tuesday, or next month, uh, next Monday at one o'clock. Prohibits a person from overdosing in certain public places or on a public conveyance. Authorizes a court to refer a person who overdoses in certain public places or on a conveyance to drug court or a substance abuse treatment program in lieu of other penalties. Also was asked for a letter of support to be provided on this one.
Next Tuesday.
Next.
Says two twenty-one.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, next Tuesday at one o'clock. I will confirm that that is correct. For some reason, Monday sticks in my head, but I will confirm that, uh, or I will confirm that for you. I, I'm hearing both sides of this, that this would be an extremely difficult, um, process to enforce. That we're hearing that something needs to be done in this area, just not sure that this was the way to go about it. But, um, still being.
Define overdose, like what, right?
Yeah.
Like how, how is an, I think that, I understand, I understand that there is an issue, but to define overdose and to ask our law enforcement where we're, like, all of these different things are happening in our state and our county. You know, we've got, uh, the, uh, health department giving out, you know, Narcan and we've got, you know, the safe injection sites possibilities and we've got, you know, and now we're asking our law enforcement to decide whether something is an overdose. I just don't think, I, for me, I am more in favor of treatment options. You know, when we talk about like we need on-demand treatment and not law enforcement. Because deciding what is an overdose, I mean, most of the time, they're still coherent. Does that mean, are you talking about alcohol? Does that mean, are you talking about alcohol? I mean, where does, I personally think that there's a better way about this and I think that we do have to have a serious conversation because there's so many different ways that we're telling people to handle this situation. It's like so much crossover.
Right.
And it's confusing and we, I think that we need a clear direction on where we're supposed to be going.
I think it's pretty cut and dry when, when an officer or the fire department or CRS pulls up to a call for an overdose and they pull out the Narcan and Narcan them, I think that's, it's pretty obvious that's an overdose.
Okay, so, but alcohol?
I don't care if it's alcohol or drugs, Shelley, I'm good with both.
I just don't think that defines overdose.
I think when you're passing out on the city streets, period, there should be a consequence and at least this gives some treatment.
I don't.
And you talk about safe injection sites? I mean, what does that going to make the difference?
My point is, is that there's so many different things that are going on. There's Narcan, there's safe injection sites, they're giving out, you know, kits that can, you know, where someone that is using heroin can test for fentanyl, you know what I mean? So, we have all these different things and then you're going to put something else and task our law enforcement to decide whether someone is overdosing.
Giving out the kits for the check with fentanyl.
Right.
No, who?
The Health Department.
The Health Department.
Yeah.
Same way they're giving out needles exchange.
My point is, is that you're right, there's like so many different things, there's needle exchanges, there's Narcan and there's like all these things. There's like so many, well, there's just so many different ways that we're trying to address, address the problem and I, me personally, I've, I've spoken with people in, about this bill and I agree, I think that defining overdose and I think that we have to focus on on-demand treatment, on-demand treatment, on-demand treatment.
Unless they don't want treatment.
Which is what you're saying here. They may not want treatment.
So, there's other consequences, huh?
I'm just saying.
Then there has to be another consequence that they don't want treatment.
I, I personally am not in favor of.
The use of illegal drugs on our city streets is still illegal and there's no consequence.
I just think that the whole, you know, we've got the Good Samaritan law, we've got all these things.
Right, which needs to be, right, right.
So, what I'm saying is that there are so many different paths, there's so many different ways that we're trying to address these issues and.
If we've been addressing them now for five, six years in a row and nothing's changed, everything's the same way it is, if not worse.
Right, so, we're adding one more thing instead of maybe.
Adding something with the consequence.
No, I'm not in support of this, me personally. It's just me.
Two questions. One, when you sent the, the proposed legislation out, I called you and we didn't get a chance to, to touch base, but my question was basically like, it's, I think it was specific to, to the section on hotel, motel not being considered public space and we talked about the right thing and it seemed like.
I don't remember seeing that in there.
Yeah, and, and if you go down like the, the full length of the proposed changes in that bill, it said something like hotel motel is not going to be considered a public place. Because in another section of the bill, it speaks to it saying it is a public place and I could have been reading it wrong, but clearly those two sections conflicted with one another. And so, I think just on the merits of, of that simple thing, I had some concerns that, that it seemed to be that the language was conflicting as it applied to, to, because I think it even added a new definition of, of, of public, public place.
Public nuisance.
Yeah, and, and so, it didn't seem to match up with existing language.
Right.
As, as clearly as it should. And, and then the, the second was, who's going to make the determination?
Right.
So, me.
Not, not so much like that, that our officers or CRS or somebody can't, but are they the end-all, be-all determining that? Because let's be honest, if they are the determining person, right, then I just feel like all that's going to happen is more time spent in that public legal process where, where John Smith comes in and says, yeah, you know, Officer Jones helped me and, and, you know what I mean, like, the officer's not going to be able to remand that person to that, right? That isn't how it's going to work.
Right.
So, what court system, are, are we, are we something going to be tying up our officers in more court appearances and then a judge is ultimately going to decide whether Mr. Smith is remanded somewhere or not? And if that's the case, with due deference and respect, you know, to the legal system, I just don't feel like a lot of those are going to wind up if Mr. Smith says, I don't want to go, or a judge is going to say, you're going to go anyway. I just don't get that vibe in Maryland. I just get the vibe that they'll go, oh, this guy don't want to go, all right, you know, take care, you know, try and do better out there. So, I guess that's my curiosity. I think at the, the base root of it, of our officer saying, yes, you know what I mean? I, I addressed this situation in the public space of this individual operating in a manner that, that isn't conducive to our community and that person goes and gets that addressed in that moment. And then after that moment, that person says, you know what, I really don't feel like spending six or nine weeks there, I'm just going to go in, what, right? They make it, they make it a hearing four weeks, six weeks. So, unless that infrastructure is set up separately than the current court system, we're now four, six weeks down the road, that individual goes in and our officer goes in and quite frankly, I think that our officers are a little exhausted and frustrated from going into those settings and watching the court say, see Mr. Smith, take care. Now, we're just like introducing an entirely extra or additional process where we think that it's going to be, okay, they're going to send Mr. Smith to, to the place. Now, our officer's going to walk out there and go, well, you know, that, that, this new rule's a waste of time.
Well, if Mr. Smith don't want to go to a place, Mr. Smith needs to go to jail.
That isn't happening.
Well, it needs to happen.
That ship has sailed.
If we aren't to change what you want to see, then it's not going to change.
At the state level, that ship has sailed and I get what we're trying to do here and I support it. I just don't have any belief that the state legal system is going to reverse course and send somebody to places that, that, that even more frankly speaking, don't have the space. Or, or, and, and I don't mean this in any demeaning way to all the, the nonprofits out there that are trying to do good to address this situation, but I don't feel like they're going to the clinical or medical settings that we in our minds envision they're going to go to, to get that rehabilitated, rehabilitative assistance. They're going to a place that, that, you know, collects the funds, watches over that individual for six weeks and then they're out.
That you also can't get in on demand.
That's what I'm saying, like, like, I feel like this is a very, a very like front-loaded, yes, this is a good idea and then the other 75% of the stuff that has to happen ain't going to happen.
So, what, what I could do is respond back on this one that basically would be a no, a no position with these comments and then she, she can take that and go where it goes.
I'm in favor, but I'm a realist.
Well, well, but I think the problem then becomes being, doing a letter of support for this, then dealing with what is left.
What used to happen is we have to have the bill up on that screen there, not just what you have.
Okay, I will forward you all the bill.
Well, I've got, I'm just saying, I mean, the people need to see what that bill is actually about.
Okay.
It's very confusing.
It is, it is very confusing.
It's a good start, but we have more questions and answers.
It's not confusing to me, so. I got to go.
Letter of support or not?
Not for me, not for me.
I'll zoom in.
I'm good with letter of support. I don't think they're doing anything.
That's 2-2. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to testify.
And you can do that, you can serve it as a, as a council, yeah, as a council.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let me keep going. Motor vehicles, off-the-road motorcycles, local regulation and enforcement, this was put in by delegates Boyce and Wyville, no hearing date set as of yesterday. Authorized municipality regulate, you know, the operation, very self-explanatory. It is what it is. I haven't gotten any, asked for any letter of support or anything. It's not that we don't try to do that now.
Again, it's.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's so confusing.
Yeah, that, I mean, that is what it is, pretty straightforward.
It's, listen, it is a, it's another paper tool, like the last one, it's a paper tool.
Right. This is one that I'm going to ask a, a letter of support for correctional services inmate release. This is one that, that Councilman Bruci has talked about requiring Division of Correction to transport a certain inmate from a certain correctional facility to a certain county after the inmate is released from a state correctional facility and supervise, and for that parole probation to supervise probation, parole and all of that stuff in a certain county after that inmate is released, basically is sending them back to the, to where they either are originally from, at the time of incarceration, or where the crime was committed and not requiring that they stay in the community where they were incarcerated. That, I already have a letter of support for that if you all are willing to do that. They, that needs to go like today because the hearing is tomorrow at 1:00 and.
Listen, I'm off, we're yelling into the land on these.
So, you're a yes, you're. I'm a yes.
Vehicle laws, noise abatement monitoring system, this is what Mr. Laird came in here a couple of regular sessions ago and talked about, to use a noise abatement monitoring system to where an officer would sit with a machine and do a noise test and if so, could go after, could go after that. The county was a no position on this.
No position.
Okay. Easy enough. Just a couple other police accountability board, this was a MML priority legislation where it put municipalities' voice on the accountability board, it would not be just a county, if you had a local, a local police force, then the municipality could create their own board. And MML is in favor of this, one of the priority legislations for that. And this, this is just informational. Couple other comments, several water wastewater, a bunch of water wastewater, stormwater bills in both the House and the Senate, mainly a result of the debacle at the Back Bay Treatment Plant in Baltimore City. I'm working with Nancy, Nancy is working with her, with her legislative support group to try to identify those that would be more costly to a water wastewater provider. I'm finding through the MML group that there are 80 municipalities out of the 150-some that actually have water responsibilities and it is very important that we make our presence known because they tend to wash these off to the county and, and a lot of these would affect us pretty significantly. There was a bill introduced yesterday that would limit a water provider from cutting off service for unpaid bills on the waterside for seniors that receive under 50% AMI as well as those with a documented health condition. Also, you could not deny service to any customer that has an unpaid bill at a previous address. This would be significant to our water department, significant and it needs to be opposed.
It just, it amazes me that somebody actually wrote this stuff.
Yeah.
It, it just does.
Preach choir, yep. Yeah, this one, this, I, this is certainly, I don't know if there's anything else coming out on this based upon the water accountability stuff that I think I showed you all a little while ago, this is, this would be bad, this would be bad.
I mean, I would find it more credible if they would say water and sewer systems need to be under the Public Service Commission.
Right.
You know what I mean? Because that's, but I mean, it takes a leap just beyond that.
Right.
It would never, it would never, politicians would never think to draft that type of language with a straight face for like Potomac Edison and Columbia Gas and, and, you know, Comcast Cable, just be, you pick one.
Yeah. The, the other issue this brings up is the fact that we only bill water to the owner of the property, not to the individual tenants, so that would be a complete mess in itself trying to figure out if there was a senior renting in an apartment building that had its own, had its own meter or a house, renting its, renting a house, we would have to figure all that, it's just, it's a.
The first thing you would have to do is take water and sewer and electric utilities out of being business accounts and put them in your general fund.
Might as well.
I mean, that, that's what you'd have to do because that's the only way you would be able to, to.
Subsidize.
In good faith, maintain the cost of that, of that service.
That's correct. So, there's more, I'll, I'll have more on this one later. Several task forces being proposed, one for police officer retention and recruitment as well as fire personnel retention and recruitment and several other public, public safety reviews. I'll have more on those because I think those are going to generate some, some more information to you all. Expansion of workers' compensation coverage related to employer responsibility, that's going to be a big issue as well. On pre-existing conditions, it, it's really going to expand our exposure to workers' comp claims, not only ours, but other municipalities as well. Acceleration of the phase into statewide $15 minimum wage to 7125, that ups to two years, could be problematic. And then the last is hearing information, the process is found on the State General Assembly website at that address. You can, if, if wanting to testify, you can write written, you can do Zoom or you can go there in person, but you can only sign up the day before the hearing between 8:00 and 3:00. So, I'll try to do these in my council comments, not to this extent, but certainly provide you updates on these. Some of these are really, really important that we keep abreast of. That's all for me. Any questions of y'all or anything?
Any questions, you guys, you guys good?
Okay.
All right, so, next up, we have council vacancy process.
Okay. Previously, they've sent out information about how this was handled for three of the last six times that there's been a vacancy. It has been done by an application process, you usually kept it open for about two weeks and they all were submitted through the clerk's office and then all the applications received, reviewed by the mayor council in executive session and you determine how many and who you wanted to interview. The interviews were completed during an open work session. After that, then you also met in executive session the following week to determine who you wanted to appoint to that position. So, if you want to follow that process again, we can take care of all the applications. If you want to do it a different way, we'll do what we can to.
I'm okay with that.
And Donna, it's a paper, paper application.
Yes.
Pick it up and.
We can email it to somebody, they'll have to come back and submit it.
Submit it.
So, that we can time mark it in.
When we would start?
That is up for you to decide.
We can start tomorrow if you like.
Is the application online?
Not yet.
Oh, but we can. Yeah, right, good. Yeah, thanks, Ellen.
So, when would you want them to do if they're available tomorrow?
Two weeks ahead.
Yeah, March 1st.
March 1st.
So, did you say?
That's, that's, that is, it's actually two weeks.
Okay.
Then we do the next week to review.
On the 7th, you're going to review an executive session, yes?
Good.
Then we would, then you all would interview the next week?
Uh-huh, yep.
In open?
I'm going to follow it.
And if you wanted, you could even have an executive session following that.
I think that's what we did for when Austin happened.
With Austin?
Yeah, we did it that evening.
And then try to keep it within a month time period because with budget, I think it's really.
I think it was that evening.
Right.
You don't?
What'd you say?
I thought it was.
I don't think we did Austin in the same evening.
It was always a week, a week, the week, the week.
I mean, I'm okay with the week too. In 2006, it was right after the interviews.
Marty.
Mine, I was eating tomato soup and some cheese sandwich, I remember it like it was yesterday.
I can look back on the 2017 one as well.
Well, we can cross that bridge when we get to, we at least start now with getting the applications out there.
For you, it was a lot.
They will be available tomorrow and I'll work with Wes to get a notice, like a press release and social media that it's available.
Yep.
And the qualifications would be what they are for any council member, that it is.
The Department of Charter?
Yes, and we have that, they have to be at least 21 years old, be a qualified voter of the City of Hagerstown and currently be a resident in the city limits and have been here one year prior to the date of the. here one year prior to the date of the possible appointment.
You said March 1st?
March 1st.
Yes.
No.
What?
I'm not. I didn't. I didn't have anything to say. I'd give it up. I'm good.
All right.
That's fine, Donna.
All right. Get that out there.
All right. City Administrator.
The only thing I have, Monday is a city holiday, President's Day, and the second most important piece of information next to what trick or treat is, is that trash service is normal schedule on Monday. So if you put your trash out on Monday, keep putting it out on Monday. That's good for me.
That's a woman McIntyre.
Nothing for me tonight. Have a Valentine's Day.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Asha.
Yes, one thing. I just to reiterate my comments about my concerns associated with the condition in which we found the, what's the hotel called?
APM.
APM Hotel the other week. And the interest, you know, this is now just another hotel we found in this type of condition. And so I just think that there's got to be something more we can do. As I said at that meeting, you know, everybody knows the condition of these spaces except for us. And I see nothing on social media except that, you know, the city did this, the city turned off the fire system, the city didn't check on things. And so everybody knows and everybody's living with the fact of knowing these conditions are unsafe for people. And the city's the only entity that is absorbing, in many cases, false blame for for the conditions we end up having to react to.
Can we bring it back to?
March.
There we go. It's already on the agenda.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank Delegate Grossman for welcoming us on the House floor today. She actually welcomed Washington County and then also she shouted out Maloney. My granddaughter got to stand up and wave. And then I want to say good luck to Barbara Ingram. They have their Allstate this weekend in Baltimore. And go get them, Canal Austin. And happy Valentine's Day. And this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm joined today by City Administrator Scott Nice Warner. Great to have an opportunity to talk to you, pick your brain a little bit about things. And and one of the things that I that I wanted to start with was some of that legislation that you mentioned. Because I think a lot of people aren't aware of that at this particular stage. And you were able to shed some light on some of those bills and ones in particular that will affect Hagerstown in a good way potentially, in a bad way potentially. So which ones do you feel are most important? I know you talked about that a little bit in the meeting, but maybe if you could go into a little more on those particular bills that that you're citing and why it is you feel that they are important to the citizens of Hagerstown.
So I think I think you've got two kind of categories of bills, those that that a a citizen would recognize as being related to what they would see happening in the community. And then those that would affect really government more more in the background.
Right. Yeah.
During our daily operations. And for those that citizens would be directly impacted by certainly the two tax sale bills that would provide a municipality the ability to be more proactive on blight within our communities, be able to take care of it, whether that be for properties that are not capable of being rehabbed to be, you know, to be brought down, to create green space or, you know, room for additional parking or something like that. Otherwise, it the municipality's hands are tied. And blight blight in a community is not good in any level, whether it be vacant or inhabited, in my opinion, especially through a rental process. Because as we've seen on the transient side, there are conditions that people just should not be made to live in. And that's what this legislation will help us get rid of. Another important bill, certainly the ANA tax from a government perspective, the repealing of that, that's a, you know, potentially an upwards of half a million dollar hit to our general fund. That ANA tax is is made mostly because the increased services that these events that are charged ANA tax, ANA fees to becomes part of the ticket price help fund. We have to find that money from some other place. And, you know, obviously with well, maybe not obviously, but in Maryland, municipalities don't have that much of an opportunity to generate revenue except through property tax. So that is certainly a bill that I did not expect this council to support. And and obviously, we we would not support it in in the General Assembly. The other bills, the water bill, the water issue, we're not being able to cut off, even though certainly have empathy for those for situations like that, when it comes to trying to sustain a water operation, is is would be very, very tough on the bottom line on operating through water, through our water revenues. So.
Yeah. And there would be a lot of administrative work that would go along with that.
It'd be huge.
Determining who's.
Yeah, it would be huge.
Who, where they are and all of those things that go along.
Because water is water within the state of Maryland can be leaning against property if it's not paid. That's why we only we and other municipalities, not just Hagerstown, bill the owners because they're ultimately responsible for for the for the property. If if this bill was passed, we would have to dig down into the tenant level, hard enough to do that on the electric side. To try to do it with water where we have, you know, a half an additional, you know, 50% of the customers that we have on the waterside, it would just it would be a nightmare, total nightmare.
There was a lot of debate about the overdosing in public bill.
Yeah.
And to me, and and I want to get your opinion on this, but but I feel like a lot of that is just born of the frustration.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it really comes out of that. And, you know, I don't know that there's ever a perfect answer to anything. So somebody who is on one side or the other might have to eat a little of something that they don't quite agree with. But how do we land on something that will work for all parties or at least a starting place where we can go from here and and make some inroads?
Well, I think this is a starting place.
Okay.
I I think the bill, it's it's a much more complex situation than I think what this bill puts forth, but it's a good start.
Okay.
And it's out there now. And I appreciate that Delegate Grossman put this in originally. And I believe I I believe that Senator Quarterman has crossfouled this in the Senate, but I haven't seen that yet. But it shouldn't be any different than what than what Delegate Grossman put in. But it's a start. I think personally, I think there are a lot of holes in it that would need ferreted out, but it gets the conversation started because
Right.
It is a problem.
Yeah.
Obviously, it is a problem, not just in Hagerstown. It's a problem in Cumberland. It's a problem all across the state.
Yeah.
And we need we need to address it. And this is a good start.
Yeah. And I think that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Some of those things within the bill that probably need to be addressed, refined, whatever you might call it.
Yes.
Before we we get to something that.
Yes.
Might be, you know, acceptable to most.
Yeah. It's going to be a tough bill anyway.
Yeah.
Even even on a good day, I think it would be a tough bill to get through the legislature. But again, it gets the conversation out there. So.
Yeah. And let's go back to to shift gears back to the the parking deck discussion.
Okay.
And Councilmember Bruci mentioned talking to the county about that. And I know at the state of the county, one of the things, one of the words they mentioned was collaboration. They want to collaborate with the city and perhaps the the new administration there will will do that. Time will certainly tell. But i- is this a place perhaps where we could start?
Sure.
Okay. And 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 how would how would we do that? As mentioned, time is is short as it relates to this project.
Talk to each other.
Just that simple.
Yeah, to me. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, staff has staff has never stopped. I I I have a great relationship with the county administrator. I think he I think he is is a fantastic guy. I think Kirk Downey, former administrator, who's who's the the attorney.
Uh huh.
Great guys. Their staff is is phenomenal. We have great, we have great relationships with with everyone at the county. But it just now the the electives have to get together. And and we'll do that. I'm sure we'll do that. We're going to do it really, really soon. And I appreciate all of the councilmen's or all the commissioners' comments I watched today. So I, you know, when it came to the new mayor, I think the new mayor is going to be very, she's a relationship builder.
Uh huh.
And I think she'll do exactly that. I think we'll do that not only with them. I think we have other organizations that we need to, we need to do that with. And I think if there's anybody that can do it, it's Mayor Martinez and certainly John Barr and the and and the the current group of commissioners, I think we'll I think we'll get that started real soon.
Yeah. Well, that's encouraging. Something that that at times is not very encouraging, our social media comments. And I just sort of wanted to get your opinion on just how much we should react to social media as the city of Hagerstown. I mean, there are so many times we put something out that is glowingly positive and then there are negative comments. So how do we sift through those comments, balance them, positive and negative, and then make something of them? How do we how do we sort of digest them and then make them a starting point for working on something to make it better? Because I think, you know, we're we're sort of in a position where we need to do that. We need to find those answers. But but how do we sift through those comments? How much do we need to react to them?
Why all the tough questions this time? No, seriously.
Well, that's how this year has gone so far.
Boy, it has.
It hasn't been an easy start to the year.
So Councilman, former Councilman Metzner made a comment years ago. I think I was probably a department head then. And and there was there was something going on on social media and and council would just get blasted. And 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 I he made the comment, it's really stuck with me, that when when you start legislating by the social media comments, then you're then governing is a failure. Because you will get the full gamut of of comments on social media.
Right.
And, you know, people have every right to put whatever they want to on social media. Our responsibility is to put truth out.
Right.
And if we can stand behind the facts and be as transparent as possible, then if someone wants to go out there and completely, you know, put something that is, you know, a 100% falsehood out there just to start stirring the pot a little bit, they can do it.
Yeah.
But but our responsibility is to, it's why we do this. It's why it's why we started doing this after council meetings.
Right.
It's it's why we why we have expanded our presence on on social media to get our word out. You know, it's America. And people, people have the right to put out there what they want.
That's right.
As long as they don't defame or or slander. And even then, that becomes a judgment call, it seems like anymore. So we just got to keep doing what we're doing. And we take what we see on social media. So we just got to keep doing what we're doing and we take what we see on social media, uh, for what it's worth. And sometimes, sometimes there's good stuff out there and we get, we get great feedback. Uh, but you have to be able to, you have to be able to distinguish between what is and what's not. Uh, but we just got to keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, it's, it's great to hear you simplify that because it can be easy sometimes when you read the comments, just to go down the rabbit hole and you're like, okay, what was the, what, what was this in the first place? Where did this even start? So.
Well, you know, but you know where you come from. You know, you know from what basis of, of fact that you come from.
Right.
And obviously, in my position, if, if I'm going to, uh, put false information out as it relates to whatever's discussed at this table in a work session, or I put out stuff in an, in an executive session, which should not ever be done, uh, I expect to get judged and, um, held accountable for that.
Yeah.
Just as I will any department head or any city staff that would go out and do that.
Sure.
Um, so we know where we, we know where we come from.
Right.
And, um, if we don't come from that position of fact, um, then we hold that accountable.
Yeah, I, I, I rarely comment, but when I do normally, it is just laying out the facts.
Anyway.
I know, that's the case.
That's why Will Kaufman's the one that comments on your weekends. We all trust Will.
Well, he's a great promoter.
Yes, he is.
Uh, speaking of which, uh, well, not of, of Will Kaufman necessarily, but, uh, but of, of, uh, citizens of, of Hagerstown, residents of Hagerstown, those who would be eligible to be a councilperson, uh, should they want to be. I mean, we just had the social media discussion, but nonetheless, you have to have skin that's a little bit thick, but you also have to be one who, who wants to see things get done in Hagerstown, wants to be, uh, someone who wants to have a voice, have a vote right here at this table. So talk about how that process is going to, uh, play out. Uh, the council made its decision tonight on how that's going to go.
Yep.
You've been through this before, so kind of lay this out.
Well, I haven't been through it as an administrator. I've been through it as a, as a, you know, staff person.
Right.
Um, what will happen is, uh, to, starting tomorrow morning, there'll be an application online on the website. Um, you'll provide a, a link on how to get to it, uh, also provide the requirements. You know, you have to be twenty-one, you have to have lived here for a year before the date of whatever the appointment would be. Um, and there's a couple of other things, they're all in the charter, but we'll make it easy, uh, for folks to understand what that is. And, uh, you know, the main thing is you're a city resident.
Yeah.
And it'll want to take on the responsibility of, of being a decision maker on how things are done, uh, within the city. Uh, we have never had a, um, a shy or not motivated group of people that have applied, thankfully. Um, we have had, uh, at least the council has had a great, uh, candidate pool to choose from. And I think they've done pretty well, whether it be, uh, Marty Brewbaker, back when Councilman Alshire went to the county as a commissioner. Uh, Shelley, of course, is still here, um, and then, um, Austin Heffernan, who was a, who, who, you know, between Shelley, I can tell you as a department head, not really telling stories on anybody, but it is what it is, we had no clue who they were.
Yeah.
Um, and, and of course, as a department head at the time, we, you know, a little nervous because, um, we weren't sure, uh, really what, from where they came from.
Yeah.
Uh, but it turned out, you know, obviously Shelley and, and Austin, Austin didn't make it, uh, through the last election, but they were amazing. Uh, Shelley is and Austin were amazing council members. And very knowledgeable, very, uh, very pro-staff and pro-Hagerstown. And that's what, and that's what you have to be. You have to want to see things get better.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and, and always moving forward. You always have to move forward, uh, and look forward as, as an, as an elected body. And, and, uh, the five that were here before Mayor Keller left, uh, were doing that. I'd love to see five, uh, one added to the four that will continue that going.
Yep. Seeking, uh, one more amazing council member and applications will be available starting on tomorrow morning.
Yep.
And will be, uh.
Two, yeah, we'll go to March first.
Yep.
Yeah, and then, uh, council will meet in executive session on the seventh, uh, to review the, the, review the resumes, cut it down to a number to interview, whatever that number is, is up to them. Um, then, uh, there will be a work session where each candidate will come in and, and interview. And those questions, uh, they'll come up with their own set of questions to ask. Um, then they could either meet an executive that night or give it a week to think about it and then, uh, be ready to swear in, but try to keep it within that month period. Cause it's, it's a very consequential time of year to do this because we'll be introducing the budget
Yep.
Uh, in, in, in the middle of March. And we need five, uh, council members and we need to, it's going to be a very quick learning curve for the, for the new council member to, uh, to, to get them up to speed so that, so that they can talk budget with everyone else.
Well, it's been an exciting start to the year to say the least.
It has.
And, uh, more to come, uh, as you mentioned. And, uh, as I said, uh, always great to have an opportunity to talk to you about, uh, some of these things because I try to keep in the back of my mind, hey, the next time I have the city administrator here, I might want to mention this to him because I've been hearing this or, you know, somebody said this. So just trying to take notes along the way, so I apologize for any difficult questions.
Well, and that's fine. And I didn't get a Valentine, so. I didn't even get candy.
Oh, man.
From anybody on this floor, as a matter of fact.
Got a little tear in my eye.
It's all right.
Yeah, if I had only known.
I won't get one at home either.
What?
No.
Well, I'm going to get you out of here on that note.
Thank you.
Before we, uh, before we get in any trouble here.
All right.
Uh, thanks to, uh, City Administrator Scott Nice Warner. Thanks to you for watching. And we look forward to seeing you next time on Council Wrap. For now, that's a wrap.